So let me call the Tuesday, June 8th, 2021 Westchester County Planning Board meeting to order. Everyone can see on the screen, the next meeting dates, July 6th, August 3rd, and September 14th. Chairman's remarks. I want to thank everyone for attending the second meeting of the month. Unfortunately, there's no overtime paid for our work, but this board has been very hardworking and I appreciate it. And I can't start a meeting without asking, have we heard from Con Edison?
I don't see, I don't know if Norma is going to be attending this morning, Richard, so she'll have to report back another time.
Okay, well, we have quite a few items to go through, so I'll leave my remarks at there. You're saying that Norma is not on at this point?
Right.
So then let's just go straight to the draft planning board report of the 2021 capital project requests. So number one of the capital budget, five-year capital planning process, Larry Sewell, Budget Director.
And do I see Larry on or getting, were you going to speak for Larry this morning?
Yeah.
Great, thank you, Gideon. I know we had commented briefly about the kinds of items that the board might be interested in hearing from the Budget Director. But if you can introduce yourself and just kind of give a brief overview of the the status of the county's capital program and finances. I know the board was interested in that last year as well.
Okay, well, as of right now, you know, per the charter, Section 167 of the county charter really lays out the entire budgeting process, both for capital and operating budgets. On May 1st, the departments submitted to us their requests for 2022 through 26. We've gone through some of those so far. Those requests, I believe, have been sent out to the Capital Projects Committee member, which consists of the County Executive, the Chairman of Board of Legislators, the Chairwoman currently of Budget and Appropriations, and then the seven ex officio staff members that are on the CPC. I believe the meeting for finalizing the staff is now going through those requests, and we will make amended changes to those requests to be presented to the Capital Projects Committee July, at which point they will approve or not those changes to the plan. And then the County Executive will present his capital budget on October 15th of this year. You know, running parallel with that process is the planning board's process. You guys have received the 22 requests and are reviewing those items for the planning aspects.
Right.
And then by September 10th, the planning board has to approve or issue a report of their approval or disapproval of the projects. And then we move forward as I said with issuing the County Executive's proposed budget in October. You know, the CPC committee staff, also sort of known as Capital Work Group, meets generally, we'd probably say we meet three out of four weeks per month to review not only the new requests, but the status of all existing projects and how we can move those forward. I think that's a real quick summary of the overall process.
Great. Gideon, thank you. And again, we appreciate you being here. And, you know, the board may have some other questions about, you know, we had prepared some numbers for the Chair over the last couple of days regarding projects that are, have been appropriated, but have not yet moved forward or only moved forward slightly. You know, we've answered some of those questions. Richard, I know you had requested that we should share some of that information to the board.
Yes.
We will do that after this meeting. I wanted to also see if there's any other questions or information that we wanted to send to the board as well as we discussed this. And if you'd like to, we can kind of review some of those questions and answers now, or I could just forward them along to the board.
Why don't you just go over them quickly now, because I think they provide a good understanding of where we are in the process.
Sure, just give me a moment. I'm going to pull that up here. So Richard was asking about, you know, how many projects are sitting idle within the capital program? They've already been appropriated and they haven't either moved or they've only moved slightly. There, what we had found was there were 396 projects in the capital program that have funds appropriated. Of those 396 projects, 89 projects, or 22%, had no funds expended obligated. 157 projects, so 40% have had between 1% and 24% of their funds expended. 37 projects, or 9%, have had between 25 and 49% of their funds expended obligated. And 113 of the 396 projects have had over 50% of their funds expended obligated. So that kind of gives you a range of how on projects that have already been approved have had funds appropriated. There are a number of them that have either had no funds expended or a smaller amount. Richard was asking about the definition of expended obligated, just to kind of get a clearer idea about what that definition is. So expended, it's expenditure is an actual cash outlay for the acquisition or betterment of a capital asset. An obligation, which is also known as an encumbrance, it's an obligation in the form of a purchase order, contract, or other commitment, which is chargeable to an appropriation subaccount, and for which a part of that appropriation is reserved prior to incurring the liability and prior to the actual expenditure of funds. Again, that's just an idea about how, when we see that number on our, the long sheets that we send you, what expended obligated means.
It seems that in the past, that's not exactly been up to date in terms of...
Right, right. You know, Richard, we have pointed to a situation where even our department hadn't encumbered funds that had been actually put towards a project. You know, you, as you see, you know, affordable housing developments for, say, $2 million. We weren't encumbering those funds immediately. So there was, it had the appearance of a large amount of money that had been appropriated and not expended and obligated. And again, those are the types of things that the Budget Department and our Finance Department helps us with and make sure that we do those things immediately. So it all shows up when it needs to show up, and so there's no appearance of projects that aren't moving ahead. Richard was asking about the legal status of the five-year program. This comes up with, you know, we send you this planning board report for next year's projects, for 2022 projects, and we all pay, we're paying close attention to those. Richard was pointing out about, well, what about the projects out in the outer years? Are those to be reviewed by the planning board? And the answer is yes. The Board of Legislators and the County Executive and the Planning Board are all given in the county charter, the responsibility to look not only at next year's projects, but also the full five-year program. We do pay some attention to that in our introductory sections in our planning board report. You do get the five-year program laid out on those long sheets that we give you. So it, yes, it is a responsibility of you, and you do have the opportunity to comment on those things. And as your board does, look at the layout of the five-year program and how, whether or not it's balanced and things like that. So again, you're welcome to comment on those types of things. And Richard was also asking about, you know, how many projects are out there in the outer years? So we did a quick calculation about projects that aren't in 2022, which is what, which is the focus of your report. What's in 2023 through 2026? And there are 95 projects in those four years that have a portion of the funds also in 22, 2022. So some of the projects are in 2022 and carrying through the several of the outer years. But there are 118 projects of the 213 projects that are, that don't include a 2022 request, that are in the outer four years. So again, 118 projects are in the outer years. So they're going to be requested in the 2023 through 2026. That doesn't include under review, which is considered, again, you know, under review is kind of just what it states. It's something that the departments have submitted in their capital program as an outer year for a project that still needs to be vetted or discussed, but they want to identify it in the capital program in some way, so it's put in under review. So those were just some of the questions that were asked by Richard over the last few days to kind of clarify about how we look at the full program. The issue of, sometimes it appears that there are a lot of funds that aren't expended obligated, and it is true, some projects haven't started, haven't had the funds expended obligated. And we, and as the Budget Office reminds us a lot, you know, projects need to get moved. The Capital Work Group continues to keep our projects moving. And in fact, there are projects over the years that haven't moved and may get closed out. So projects traditionally get closed out when they're done. There are a handful of projects that never get started and do need to get closed out. So that, and again, Capital Work Group, Staff of the County Executive and the Budget Department, Planning, Public Works, look at that annually during the year. Keep projects moving, close out projects that need to be closed out.
Thank you, Bill.
Sure, Richard, thank you.
For doing that research. And I just think that, you know, the 89 projects that haven't even started, you know, that impacts the bottom line when we look at the totals. It includes a lot of projects that haven't gone anywhere and maybe never will go anywhere. And it's, so it's a little misleading in the totals. So if that can be cleaned up a little bit, that would be, that would be helpful. And the fact that there are 118 projects in addition to the ones that we're going to go over in detail today means it's like quite a job to go over all of them. But why don't we leave, start going over the 2022?
Sure, sure. Okay, Michael, thank you for putting those slides up. Gideon had already talked about, again, your role looking at the physical aspects. He'd already talked through the timeline for the rest of the year. So again, this is our next steps. We're asking that after our meeting today, you get back to us by next Tuesday, June 15th, with any additional comments, written comments, or you can even call us, but preferably written, because I'm going to be on vacation for the next few days. But if you can send us a note on that. At our July meeting, your July meeting, we're hoping to have sent you the draft planning board report back to you with two weeks before the July 6th meeting, and we hope that you adopt the planning board report at that meeting. Then we will transmit that planning board report to the Capital Projects Committee. As Gideon mentioned, it's, if members include the County Executive and his staff, Board of Legislators, and other commissioners, we transmit it to them. And then in the fall, as Gideon mentioned, the County Executive submits, proposes his capital budget. The Board of Legislators then reviews it, and they, the capital budget is adopted at the end of the year. So next slide, Michael. What we try to do every year, as you see on this table, this is kind of a table showing going back in time. So 2022 is on the right side here, and the previous four years. So this is kind of going backward to give a comparison about what the requested budget, this isn't the approved budget, but what was requested in May over these past five, five years. 2022 is at the top number, the total project costs are $503 million. That's much higher than any other previous year. So in the middle, net county share, those are not non-county shares, those are funds from outside the county. That goes up and down depending on the projects every year. With the total county share for this year, 49 requested, and the smaller amounts in the previous years. And as we'll go through today, there are several large projects that make up that $503 million worth of requested funds. And again, it's a handful of projects that are quite large. This is a breakdown for us to understand that 503 requested for next year is now in the left-hand column, but it's the breakout of what is in the districts and what is going to be coming funded through the general tax, county tax levy. So the districts, out of the 503 million, the districts, which includes refuse districts, the sewer and water districts, and the airport includes 221 million of the 503 for a total, and then the balance from tax levies, 282 million. So Michael, next slide. So we're going to go into the full list of 96 or 97 projects, I think, in 2022 requested. And the first up to bat is Public Works. And we put the page number in the big draft planning board report. So this is on page 13. This is Department of Public Works and Transportation. It's called Buildings General. There's another category called Buildings Miscellaneous, which are kind of a grab bag of smaller departments. We'll go through that after Robert Abamont from Public Works is going to, Public Works and Transportation is going to talk through the Buildings General projects. And Robert later on is going to talk about roads and bridge projects as well. So, so, and just before Robert starts, we break these out. You'll see on this slide are several projects. These are continuing projects. Generally, if this project is new, we give it its own slide. So if it's, we haven't seen it before, presented to you in previous years, we'll have a separate slide saying it's a new project in the program. So that's landing in 22, for 2022, for the first time in your review. So do I see Robert? Robert, you there?
Yes, I am. Good morning.
Thank you again, Robert.
Actually, the first project is a good example of what both Bill and the Chairman were discussing, where projects that maybe hadn't started or were older projects, you know, and now we're going through that, even the departments and the work group itself, to seeing what projects can move forward. So this first project, it's a general project, exterior infrastructure repairs at the White Plains Campus. The 22 request actually focuses on two of those buildings. It's additional funding for the project. It's for 112 East Post Road and 143 Grand Street. It's exterior infrastructure repairs at those. We are actually going to the Board of Legislators now with the design request. So design would be completed sometime next year, which at that point, we would need construction funding, and this now brings that project in line with current estimates. The original request for those two projects were actually back in 2016, 2017. This kind of encompasses what we've been discussing, trying to move those projects, continuing to move those forward, balancing, you know, economics and the public works workload and what projects we can get out. So this is a good example of that. So again, as I said, this request is for $2.72 million. Additional funding brings the costs in line with current estimates. B015E is the interior infrastructure repairs at the White Plains Complex. The 22 request is for $1 million, is for study design to replace the chillers and ice storage systems here at the MOB. The ice storage system actually goes back to the 80s. It was a project put in with NIPA. The chillers are probably about the same age, and it's time to replace them as we move forward. B035E is our equipment acquisition program. This is a $500,000 request. This is for equipment that enables the Department of Public Works to maintain the county roadway systems, bridges. Those items, we're looking for a plow truck with interchangeable bodies, you know, dump body, a spreader body. Also want to replace one of our rack body trucks, which is equipped with cones, barricades, and barrels to allow us to do our work that's necessary.
If I can interrupt for a second. This on the screen is skipping between the PL1 designated projects and the PL2 designated projects. It's going back and forth. So if you want to keep track on the planning board report, you're going to have to be going back and forth between these two lists.
Right. Thank you, Richard. Right. Not only do we have, we're presenting them with continuing projects on one slide and new projects on another slide. Right, in the report, we, the PL1s, we give kind of a short review. We don't give it a full sheet, table. We condense it down to just a small description. PL1, which is defined as not significant planning, physical impacts. And whereas PL2 is more significant and will require more significant review by the Planning Board and Planning Department.
Okay, proceed.
Yeah, I just to comment on that too. You know, any project that's in design, we share with the Planning Department for their comments and review the 30, 60, and 90% documents as we move through that, that process. Moving forward, the Capital Project B077E, Infrastructure Rehabilitation at the Mount Kisco District. The 2022 request is for additional funding to bring in line the 2020 request, which will address windows, doors, and storefronts at the Mount Kisco District Office Building. So we anticipate getting this project moving into design and requiring the construction funding in 2022. The next project, B0112, is the cooling tower replacement at Public Labs in Valhalla. This is also additional funding based on current costs. This project is in design with the New York Power Authority, because it does have an energy component to it. And they're, like I said, they're in design. We anticipate design being completed in the first quarter of 2022. And moving on, Capital Project B0114, Infrastructure Rehabilitation Valhalla Campus. The 22 request of $200,000 is to replace existing piping at our central heating plant that runs from the condescent tanks to the de- aerated tanks. The central heating plant provides steam to the corrections, the hospital, Woodfield Cottage, and Public Labs Building. B0117, Infrastructure Rehabilitation at 450 Sawmill River Road. That is an $800,000 request. That's to address ventilation and humidity control in the Board of Elections warehouse, where they store all the electronic voting machines. We've noticed they've had some issues regarding those two items, so we will address those in 2022. Some of the projects you'll see, we tend to group these capital projects in five-year blocks. They're addressing various projects at a specific site, but keeping them within a five-year block. It's a little more manageable, both from project standpoints and accounting standpoints. Capital Project B0120, this is a project that we, we used to have years ago, and we now have reinitiated it. It's feasibility studies. It's a $200,000 request. It helps in the preparation of long-range plans, better identification of projects and their scope of work. Slide. This is a new request, Capital B0123. It's the Public Works Fleet and Road Maintenance Facility. Where the, it's a request for $3.3 million for design. We currently have the road maintenance facility, the White Plains Harrison border, and then we have our garage in White Plains. Both facilities are old, kind of reached their useful life. We're tight on space. The concept here is to consolidate those two facilities up at our Valhalla campus, which is a central location. It then would also allow us to consolidate staff and workload and to move forward. We're currently in a study right now to determine the requirements and siting of that facility.
How does that relate to the North 60 study and the overall grassland study?
Bill, I mean, we've been working with planning. Bill, do you want to address that?
Sure, this is, it's in the neighborhood of the North 60. It's not part of the property assigned to the North 60 development. And we've been working with DPWT on identifying available parcels. And related to this project, DPWT is also doing a detailed assessment of their existing facilities to get a better understanding about the size and the types of facilities that they'd be needing at this site. So there's still some, you know, analysis to complete for this. And we're kind of awaiting that to get a closer look at that. So, but again, it's, Robert said too, there's a critical need to get, get those garages up and running in some form or fashion, either at their existing locations or up at grasslands. So, but this is one of the sites. And again, the siting of it at this parcel is to be determined, and the size is to be determined.
Well, 3.3 million is a whole lot of money for a study that, having you figured out the size of the facility.
3.3 million is actually for design. The study is underway. I don't know if I have the square footage in front of me, but also the acreage. So it is a large facility, and the intent to then would be to sell the existing facilities, because they do need work. And it's, do you put money into old facilities that have, don't really meet our current needs, or to build a new state-of-the-art facility that would consolidate your workforce and help with your ease of operations?
I understand the reasoning behind it, but it doesn't sound like you're that far along, that you're going to be spending 3.3 million in design for the...
The study is, will be, could be completed within the next two months.
Right, and again, if it's, you know, if a decision's made either way about where to put it or whether to stay put, again, that, that would happen this year as well, so.
Please inform the planning board where, you know, where it's going to go and the size and everything, because this, you know, the review of the grasslands master plan is something that the planning board definitely should be involved in.
Yes, it definitely is related to the grasslands master plan and us working with the County Executive's Office on a variety of, you know, parcels at the campus, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is, thank you, Robert, very much. Buildings miscellaneous.
No problem.
Start on page 24. Again, this is kind of a grab bag of various departments, that are smaller departments, kind of one-offs for those departments. First one is BDA02. Apologize, I was hopping around like you're all probably doing in the, in your reports. And I have this up here.
Hey, Bill?
Yes?
So when you, when you say page 24, so you're, I'm assuming that the, the document that I had mailed to me was, is, has a different numbering than, than what I'm now sort of working on, you're working off of, what you're working off of, that was probably...
Let me just check that. Thank you, Robert.
Because, for example, BPF40 is on page 20. Yeah, it sounds like we've already gone past page 20.
Yeah, we're hopping around. We're not going in numerical order.
Oh, I see. Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, again, thank you very much for pointing that out. We are grouping them and presenting them slightly different, so. And the report is kind of, the, the groups of departments, so. So back to the Buildings Miscellaneous. So these projects are on page 25. Just checked on that. Okay, good. It is page 24. Thank you, Robert. So BDA02, District Attorney Information Technology. This is basically an IT project. This project funds the purchase, upgrade, and maintenance of equipment, software, and systems to support the DA's various office locations throughout the county. The 2022 requests of 355,000 will fund the replacement of the, of LPR storage equipment, backup systems for the District Attorney email, and forensic towers. The next project is a new project, DES23. That's Department of Emergency Services. This is for a ladder truck for $1.5 million. Again, they have ladder trucks at their facility at Grasslands Campus. They use for training and also for the fire, fire protection at the Grasslands Campus. That truck is from 1988, so it's quite old. And this is a $1.5 million new ladder truck to replace that. They've been working with the older truck and maintaining it, giving it as long a life as it could. BPS29.
What, what page is that on?
The ladder truck is...
Oh, no, no, BPS29. What page is that on?
BPS29 is jumping to SOD Vehicle Storage. Sorry, okay, yeah, that's a, that is a PL2 project. That is on page 26. Thank you, Richard, for pointing that out. So BPS29, this is the Department of Public Safety. It's the new SOD or Special Operations Division Vehicle Storage Facility. The, this is for additional funds. You had seen this project before. This is at the Valhalla Grasslands Campus. This is for the construction of a new 6,500 square foot heated vehicle storage facility to house the Special Operations Division vehicles and equipment. After further review and design, the department and DPWT determine that there's additional space needed than previously designed, and there's a need for an additional vehicle bay at the building for an additional cost of $680,000.
Is that, is that under construction now?
No, no, it's, again, this is just, it had been in design, and it's needed. These additional funds are needed to then make the project whole.
It's been in design since 2017. It's had 13 and a half million dollars allocated to it previously, and it still hasn't even started construction?
That's right. That's right.
Design was put on hold as we evaluated both the need and the department had to address that. And now design has restarted.
Perfect. Richard, you're correct. It's, it's, these, these projects take a lot of time between when they're originally appropriated. Then you have the RFP for consultants. So that it does move slowly, but that is the reason why we finally have now ninety percent plans that address the required scope and we're asking for additional funds. We can't go out to bid until we have adequate funding to cover the entire. So.
I understand that, but thirteen, thirteen million has been in our capital budget for four years. Without any progress for whatever, for whatever reason, legitimate reasons. But that's sort of the way that these projects are, you know, hang around and hang around. And I guess finally this is going, going to go ahead.
Right. And, and, and part of that is also, Richard, just working with the departments. As you all know, we're working with the departments on the Grasslands Master Plan, looking at pushing and pulling different spaces, open spaces, develop little spaces. And that was one reason we were looking at it. And again, it's, the sighting was finalized, the design was finalized. It was determined that they needed more, not finalized, but during design, as Robert said, you know, it was determined that they needed more space. So, so this is a cost escalation, not only due to the delay, but an adjustment in the design.
When is the Grasslands Master Plan scheduled to be finished?
Um, it's now being discussed and reviewed with the county executive's office.
Okay, go on.
All righty. So, uh, thank you, Michael. Next set of projects is with the Department of Corrections. I'm going to be talking through them. There are several different projects that are continuing projects with 2022 requests. BCR five E Infrastructure Improvements. This is a set of projects from between twenty-one and twenty-five. Just get that right here. This is a multi-year cycle of, of infrastructure improvements. And in 2022, the funds are being requested to replace the existing reheat coils, fan coil units and associated piping in the basement mechanical room of the old jail medical unit for a million dollars. So again, an ongoing project, and this is a phase for that in the, in the mechanical room in the old jail. BCR fifty, infirmary suicide prevention area, 1.6 million dollars. This project includes the replacement of the existing infirmary. It will also, also create a new staff-efficient suicide prevention watch area. This is within existing space in the facility. The 2020, 2022 request includes funding for design. So 1.6 is for design.
This isn't, this project's been around for eight years. Has there been any construction done or has it been eight years of design so far?
Let's see.
It's on page, page forty-five.
Yeah, Robert, again, if you want to give three of that project. Thank you.
It's on page forty-five, Bill.
Got it.
Yeah. So the project was originally conceived as a new building that would house the infirmary and the suicide prevention area. After they looked and we started design, it was determined that, that we could actually put the suicide watch in an existing cell block. So that design has now started again, is progressing this year to do the suicide watch in one of the existing blocks. So we split the project into two components. The 2022 request would address the infirmary, which is in modular trailer buildings that have been there for, I guess, since late eighties, early nineties. And the infirmary now will actually go into a new building with the construction in 2023. The, that's because of swing space. We have to maintain the infirmary while we construct a new infirmary. So the suicide watch is now moving forward and then we will be moving on to the infirmary. I think this is the, one of those projects that you had mentioned, you know, where, and we talked in the beginning, where we have this backlog in the capital program. And we now, this administration has been looking on how to move projects forward. We've taken steps to take old projects that are, they're no longer required or meet the needs, the, the existing needs today and remove them from the capital project program. So we're trying to move things forward. We were impacted by COVID-19 pandemic last year in 2020, which limited the amount of projects we were able to get out. Now we're actually starting to see a lot more projects being bid, especially now the next two months coming up. And you'll start seeing projects to begin moving again.
Okay, five million dollars on this project had previously been appropriated. Has any of that been spent?
Yes. Yeah, that money has been spent, spent on the initial design when it was conceived to be one larger structure. And now we've spent design money on focusing on putting the suicide watch into the existing block. I don't have the current number in front of me, what the expended obligated amount is.
Go ahead.
Okay. BCR fifty. The next project for corrections is BCR fifty-seven, Headquarters Rooftop Air Handling Unit Replacement. This project will replace, replace eight existing rooftop air handling units. The 2022 request is for additional construction funding based on current estimates. And that is for 2.1 million dollars. BCR sixty, HVAC improvements and upgrades. This project will fund HVAC, HVAC improvements with first phase, which will address the G and K blocks of the jail and preliminary design for the jail annex, which is the women's unit. And the 2022 funding, $200,000 is for study and design.
Okay, just, Bill, I ha, I just looked at the long sheets and of the 5.2 million back on the infirmary suicide, 580,000 has been expended obligated.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, BCR sixty-one. This is a project you saw last year. Parking structure infrastructure improvements for 12.7 million dollars. This is for the renovations of the Department of Corrections parking structure at the Valhalla Campus. It includes not only just the rehabilitation of the, the structure itself, but the replacement of the existing lighting system with the energy efficient LED lighting. The 2022 request is for construction and construction management.
This is on page forty-six and last year, I think in two twenty-five was appropriated for design. Has that design been complete?
No, right now we are preparing the RFP for design services because that will go to a consultant.
So, hi, Richard, this is Rob, Rob Barron. So, yeah, first of all, I want to thank the planning board, the planning staff for putting in the parking lot and garage recommendations on, on page eight and referencing, referencing them here. I, I, the big question I'm going to be asking for every parking garage is what is the cost per parking space for this, for this figure? Because that's one of the things that's not shown here.
That's something we can get for you.
Well, how many parking spaces are on this garage that we're talking about right now?
Uh, approximately six hundred and, six hundred and seventy spaces.
Wow.
So, and it's for fif, fourteen million dollars. So that's just over 20,000 per space and this is for a renovation project, right?
Yes, a major renovation project. That's correct.
Wow.
So it's 20,000 a space. But what, a new garage costs about, what, 40,000?
Probably somewhere in that area, I think.
Okay, go ahead. I mean, if you can get us that number of spaces so we can do the calculation or do the calculation for us for each parking garage. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you. And thank you, Robert. BCR sixty-two, this is a new project. This is for the rehabilitation or replacement of seventeen elevators located throughout the correctional facility at Grasslands. The current elevators are no less than 25 years old and require costly repairs. And which also impacts, again, it's a complicated facility. So it impacts staff and resident safety and security and movements. And the 2022 funding for 2.2 million dollars is for design. So the next set of projects also up at the Grasslands facility is labs and research. And the first project, BL, BLR two E, labs and research equipment acquisition. In 2022, equipment, a variety of equipment that it's, in fact, very hard for me to pronounce, but the, the various equipment is for the microbiology division, the toxicology division, the forensic division and the environmental division, all at the labs and research facility at Grasslands. Again, this is an ongoing project. They traditionally have equipment acquired every year in the capital program. This year it's for 1.9 million dollars. The next project is BLR thirteen, labs and research infrastructure improvements. This is a new project introduced this year. This is, this is a multi-year cycle of infrastructure improvements to the facility at Grasslands. In 2022, funding, funding is requested for the modification of existing office and laboratory space to accommodate changes in workflow, instrumentation, equipment and personnel. So again, an, an ongoing infrastructure improvement for a million dollars. All right, next page, Michael. Information technology. Let's see. Do we have Lennox Harris from IT, I believe is on the call. If, Lennox, are you all ready to go?
Sure.
Great. Thank you so much.
This is a part of a information technology continuing projects, twenty-two, 2022 requests. The first bit four C, employee productivity systems. That project is to allow us to get various software that's required to be used across the county for different systems that allow us to have software that can be reused and assembled for different user requirements level as well as for workflow, e-signature, data analytics, as well as cybersecurity and data content management. Next item, bit six D, purchase of computer equipment. That's essentially to allow us to continue our upgrade of our various server systems that we have on the network, servers that have reached end of life. And allows us to also replace hardware at our remote sites such as sixty control, public safety and partner correction. Bit forty-five, building access control and video surveillance systems upgrade. That project is to allow us to replace our aging video camera and video surveillance system around the county. So it includes software, hardware, cameras and a new system to manage the replacement of the current video system that basically has reached its end of life. A bit forty-seven, network and security infrastructure upgrades. That is the continuation of the upgrade of our existing network infrastructure. It will support on the upgrade and replacement of old hardware and software systems that have also reached their end of life as well as improvements to our data center systems that manages basically the entire county infrastructure. Bit forty-nine, police record management system upgrade. That's part of a system that will allow our public safety as well as the other municipal departments that they interact with for replacement of the police records management system that has also reached its end of life. The new system will allow for enhanced consolidated records management systems and consolidation and will allow for a better workflow among the different agencies. Bit thirty-two, radio system replacement. That's a continuation of the radio replacement system that's underway as we speak. These are various components as it relates to that project for replacement of, um, an addition of equipment at the various radio tower sites that are being upgraded. Bit forty-one, radio tower replacements. That's also part of the overall radio project. And that's also to replace and upgrade existing power sites that need to be replaced. A bit fifty, AMSC GI application and Linux rack upgrade. That's part of our financial system upgrade that we're looking to complete in 2022 as part of the upgrade of the financial system. And also that will include hardware and software as it relates to the management of that system. Bit fifty-three, business continuity and disaster recovery. That's part of our project to continue the support of business continuity operations for outside of our current facilities that we have, as well as putting in place the appropriate backup and redundancy off-site from our existing data centers. A bit fifty-four, critical communication and logging system replacement. That project is to allow us to continue the replacement of our recordings for public safety, public safety. The systems involved in having those recorded systems managed and maintained to a current level.
Right. Lennox, thank you. Any, any questions for, on IT? Great. Thank you so much, Lennox. We're gonna, we're gonna jump to another category under the buildings, planning and property acquisition. This is our planning department. Next slide, Michael, page thirty-six. You've seen these three projects over the years. BPL one A Housing Implementation Fund two. This is a request for an addition, an additional $10 million. And you see these projects throughout the year. This fund provides funds to municipalities for public infrastructure improvements such as water, sanitary and storm sewer, road and site improvements needed to facilitate the construction or rehabilitation of fair and affordable housing. Through the end of 2020, 1,132 units funded under HIF are completed or are under construction or have been approved for funding by the Board of Legislators. So again, you see these a lot during the year. Again, additional $10 million is requested to replenish that fund. BPL thirty, new homes land acquisition. Similarly, $10 million is, is being requested to replenish that fund. This is for the acquisition of property for the construction of fair and affordable housing. Through the end of 2020, 684 units are completed under construction or approved by the Board of Legislators and through this fund. BPL forty, storm water management, various county facilities. This is one of the two projects, but this, of storm water and flooding projects, this is the one for projects on county properties, on county facilities. A request is for $500,000 to replenish that fund. And this project helps comply, helps the county comply with federal storm or water regulations. And also it's used to demonstrate best practices to the municipalities and others, others throughout the county. Next slide, Michael. A new project in 2022, actually it's a, it has had previous lives. This project is for Hilltop Hanover Farm and Environmental Center. This project will fund the rehabilitation, renovation and other improvements of buildings and infrastructure at Hilltop Hanover Farm and Environmental Center in the town of Yorktown. The 2022 funding is for design, construction and construction management, a variety of different projects that are seen as needed, even though there's a, a master plan underway for the facility. These are improvements that are just needed more immediate.
So the master plan is not finished yet?
No, it's just, just underway in 2021. So.
And what facilities are there now?
Um, I don't know if David comes on this call. I don't know if David comes on this call. And perhaps Norma can chime in on the types of facilities up at Hilltop if you want to give that little list of Norma.
So what it is, is we're actually in the middle of doing a master plan for Hilltop to be get a better sense of. Because there are vacant buildings up there that we're trying to determine what would be good uses of them. Like there's a great barn that we would love to potentially make a restaurant or something like that in there. So we're not sure exactly what it's going to be used for, but we want to be able to start implementing the master plan that's already underway.
And the number three and a half million, that, where did that come from?
Oh, David could, David could tell you better than that, but, but the idea again is for us to be able to really make Hilltop into the demonstration. Environmental center that it was always planned to be during the Astorino administration. The Hilltop got moved from being a planning department facility to move to public works. But you know, in their defense, it just operated it as a. As a farm that provided food with some educational training to schoolchildren about where their food came from. But they really didn't move forward with the whole plan that we had developed back in two thousand and five. And so that, that's at this point, that two thousand and five plan needs to get updated. That's under, there's consultants already hired, so that's already. Underway and we expect to have the master plan. I don't think it'll be the end of this year. It's probably going to be very early next year. To be able to give us the guidance about what other environmental. Demonstrations we should be able to put in place there at Hilltop. Again, some of them using the buildings and some of them just using the grounds.
Thank you. Back to New Homes Land Acquisition. Subsequent years, twenty twenty-three, we're stepping that down from ten million to five million. Is that because we're. Our usage is not that great of the program or what, why is it stepped down and decreased?
So, so historically, we've only had programmed five million dollars a year for New Homes Land NHIF. But you know, obviously it's, as we all know, affordable housing is a major priority for, for County Executive Latimer. And so he has insisted that we move, bump it up over the last two years. We're expecting for this, for next year, he will also, because we've actually blown through the ten million dollars of New Homes Land. That we don't use the HIF nearly as much, but we have definitely been using it. And so there's, you know, so right now the expectation would be five million dollars to keep the program active for next year, for, for the following years.
Okay, and if you look at the long sheets. Says over the, over the years, forty-seven billion were appropriated and thirty million is expended. So according to the long sheets, you have seventeen million dollars unobligated funds already.
That's, that's not accurate. It's accurate in what that's recording. The, the issue is that, as you know, Richard, even after we approve things. Like tomorrow is the groundbreaking for sixty-two Main Street that, you know, you guys saw last year. So it, it's, these things take time for us, you know, once our funding gets in place, by the time they close on their tax credits. And then we actually buy the land and we, or we fund the infrastructure improvements, you know, and get under contract with all of that. It just takes time.
I understand that, but maybe we need a different definition of obligated because you're saying the money really has been obligated.
And, and some of those projects. Are in the pipeline, you know, they're, are set aside for things that may be coming soon too. So we, you know, we have a breakout of all that we can.
I don't mean to pick on the planning department, but my sense is that this happens in all departments where. The amount that shows as obligated seems to. And the amount that's appropriated seems to show there's all kinds of money available that hasn't even been obligated yet. And you're telling, and we're saying that that's really not exactly the case. So we need maybe another column that says, you know. Approved by the Board of Trustees, but not yet obligated by bonding or whatever. You know, just, just so it's, it's this clarification is there how much money is actually available, which is something you need to do. You need to know.
We've, we've, we have to annually kind of justify to the budget department and the budget department does a good job of chasing us down to making sure that we're. You know, entering when we do expend and obligate funds. And making sure that what we've got in the pipeline and what we've got in the fund, basically the pot. Before we request more funds, it's justified.
Okay, I think I've beaten this horse enough. Go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, so Hilltop, next slide, Michael. This is a new project. This is actually that, a project that came out of us working on the Grasslands Master Plan. BPL thirty-six Valhalla Complex Site Improvements. This will fund improvements to the Grassland Campus, including the design and installation of refurbished gateway monuments. When you get up to the campus, you'll see those. They're old. We, we finding signage and other campus-wide site improvements such as landscape. Landscaping, trailway, sidewalk and pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So, but again, the main component of this one point two million dollars is during this past year. We've funded a consultant to look at not only the monuments, but signage throughout the campus. It has become a hodgepodge of signs for the different uses, the medical center and medical college and all the different county departments up there. Different colors, different sizes. It's very much recognized that it's confusing and you get the confusing people's use of GPS. On where they're going and all the departments. You know, recognize that people show up at their front door looking for another place on the campus. So there are redundant signs out there. So for even for safety purposes, for people responding to emergencies, it gets confusing. So had a consultant did a study. This would take it to the next step of actually designing the signs. And then installing the signs as well.
I see that, I see that there's, it talks about pedestrian and bicycle improvements.
Yes, and that's, that's the other component of this one point two. It's not only the signs. Again, in us working on the, the Grasslands Master Plan, we've begun to identify areas where there may be sidewalks needed. Either because of, you know, herd paths where people are walking and there are no sidewalks. And also. Pedestrian and bicycle improvements, you know, possibly setting aside areas and for trails and bicycle improvements.
Well, I just want to, if, if we could just as a, as a board say that. You know, given the sort of state of the art, if we're doing this, these, these are all new, that we would make these, you know, first recycle tracks. If they're for bicycles and if that's not feasible, protected bike lanes. Because anything, anything shy of that is just sort of like not state of the art anymore.
And, and you, you've also seen as a board. Road improvement projects to DPWT for the main roads on the campus. They have, they may have projects in outer years, you know, in the future for the various roads and. As, as you're, I've used, as you've made comments, you know, we'll continue to work with DPWT on having those type of improvements on their projects. Cycle tracks, if not cycle tracks, protected bike lanes.
You know, so much happening on that campus now. You've got the infirmary, you've got the. The DPW equipment, you've got this. I mean, we need that master plan sooner rather than later. Because we're allocating millions and millions of dollars for projects up there, really in the absence of an understanding of. A total master plan.
Very much noted, Richard, yep.
Go ahead.
Alrighty, Public Works Parking Facilities on page nineteen of your report. And Robert Abamont is going to come back on again. And Richard, Michael, if you go to the next slide, thank you.
Okay, these are continuing projects that are under the parking facilities category. BPF fifty, BPF thirty-three is an existing project where any eight hundred thousand dollars. To that project that matches the current estimates for the projects in design. It addresses code issues with the fire suppression system. Which is currently only in the lower levels, underground levels of the garage. So this will replace that system. Which is now past the useful life, corroded, and then also add sprinkler systems on the upper. Ten floors of the parking structure. BPF thirty-nine is an ongoing project. We're adding another million dollars in twenty twenty-two. It's for electric vehicle charging stations. It comprises both public facing and county use electric vehicle chargers. So for example, we've, as we start to electrify our fleet and vehicles and our motor pool vehicles. We have already installed in the parking garage here at McCallion Office Building. In the motor pool area, the electric vehicle chargers for our motor pool vehicles. We are underway putting in electric vehicle chargers at several golf courses. And we're undertaking a study to see where else the immediate need might be both for. Our fleet vehicles and also maybe at park facilities or other facilities where there'd be a public facing side to that. So we continue to fund that project and move in that direction.
Robert, yeah. On BPF thirty-nine, one of my concerns is that we are sort of very sort of focused on electric vehicles. And not, and sort of not thinking about other, other modes of, of transportation like, like e-bikes, for example. Is there a way to incorporate e-bike charging into all those sites so that, that we're not choosing one? You know, so we're opening alternatives for everybody.
That's an interesting point. Yes, we can actually. Under this, look at that. I did not realize that. And that's something. E-bike, e-bike charging is something we can look at. That's an interesting point. I'll make a note of that. You know, one of the, the areas we want to look at is, you know, along the pathways, the, the North County Trail, South County Trail. You know, where can we put these charging stations? So that's an interesting comment. Because that might apply also there on the pathways. So thanks. Yeah, we'll make a note of that and expand our, our scope to look at that. Sorry, BPF forty. Again, this is the McCallion Office Building Parking Garage Rehabilitation here. The, the request is for construction funding of forty-two point two million. This is for phase two. We're currently in construction on phase one, which addressed the critical structural. Repairs needed in the building. This actually looks at many systems in the parking structure itself. Besides like the structural repairs of the columns and the deck and the ramps. We're also looking at the underside, underslab drainage. There's a coned electrical vault that we have to, has needs repair, waterproofing. One of the things too, where you have to realize the parking structure, which is about thousand vehicles. Goes underneath Martin Luther King and into the, under the courthouse. So we're also have to address the expansion joints on either side of Martin Luther King. You think Martin Luther King is a bridge and there's expansion joints on either side. Those have to be rehabilitated and looked at. So it is a large amount of money. The garage really hasn't had any work on it since the mid nineties. And it's, it, it needs all, needs this work. It's a huge structure. And, you know, we're moving forward. We will be starting design for the second phase. Within hopefully the next month or so. And then design for that phase would be completed next year when we would require the construction funding.
If you look at this project, this phase is ninety-five million dollars.
The total cost of the project. Yeah, there's a phase three.
This, for this phase, at a thousand, there's only a thousand parking spaces?
Yeah, but you have to watch because when you, actually this phase is forty-two point two million.
No, but then there's fifteen. Go on.
The phase three in twenty twenty-three is fifty million. That then actually starts to look at other systems replacement that are in the parking structure. Replacement of the electric feeds to the complex, which are currently located in a lower area where we have water issues. So we want to get those up to a higher area. Replacing the two generators that service the facility and installing a distributed antenna system for communications within the garage. The carbon monoxide detection system, the lighting system. So yeah, it's a large project.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's not needed, but I'm saying that phase two and three combined is, is almost a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars of space.
But again, you, you, if you take out the other portions, the generators, the. The expansion joints for, you know, that support Martin Luther King. You know, it's not just the parking structure. So dividing it by a thou, you know, if we, we. Maybe looked at what was the structural component of this project and then divided by that by a thousand. You know, that might be a. More comparative. Of a cost.
I know this has to be done. I know there's no, I mean, not going to tear down the parking garage. Buildings will come down above it, but. This is quite a major. Expense.
I mean, when you think about it, it's really, it's, I mean, we're spending more on this garage to, to house a thousand cars. Than we are in one of our, our affordable housing funds. And.
Ten years, ten years of, of the new homes goes into this.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I, my, my question is, and I, and I'm not, I'm not being facetious here, is that there are other. Institutions that have decided that, you know, some of these parking garages aren't worth the money. Or we could limit the amounts expenditure and pay people to not drive. And, you know, to boost our incentives for not driving, you know, to make it like sort of, you know. Like make it more desirable to not drive and put more people on our B-line bus system. I, I think we need to start, start thinking those terms, especially because our patterns document talks about reducing single occupancy driving. And in none of these projects do I see us. Moving that agenda forward. I don't know when patterns was written, like what, ninety-six or something? I think it's something we need to start thinking about seriously. So, and if you can just, on the, the electric vehicle charging stuff. If there's any way in that garage, if you could think about e-bikes as well, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the next is BPF forty-one. That's parking facility rehabilitation of the Hala Campus. This is for the Woodfield Cottage. It is a surface lot of about fifty spaces. It's eight hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's, the existing lot has been impacted by the activities required to meet the raise, the age. Legislation that was passed, so we have to reconstruct the new park, parking lot. To accommodate that facility. And that has been requested by probation.
Richard, one more thing before we, before we go back, move on to the next thing is. The design for the, the McCallion Office Building Garage was done this past year. And my question is, we had put in. Last year's capital plan, the parking lot and garage recommendations. I'd like to sort of get, and I'm not asking for this answer right now, but to sort of ask. Robert to sort of provide us what, what are those recommendations were, were, you know, used and which ones weren't. And with a sort of explanation of why the ones that weren't, weren't included.
Okay, Bill, if you could just do me a favor, if you could just send me an email with that, so I would, might forget.
Thank you very much.
Oh, no, no problem. Like I said, we were just in the process of starting the design on that, but we will take a look at that and respond that, respond to you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so now I think we shift over to roads and bridges. So the first project is RBO three F, or it's the road bridge. This project, this is additional funding of about nine, nine hundred and fifty-five thousand to bring the costs. In line with the current estimates. The project was put on hold for a bit. One of the things with the entire Bronx reservation. The number of projects, especially we, we were doing the lower portion, the repaving two other bridges. Is to coordinate the work, so the, the maintenance protection of traffic. That, that the traffic continues to flow and we don't really have large disruptions. So we had slowed this project down intentionally until those other projects could get moving. And, and now we're starting to move this project again. It's in design, move it forward. And, and now we're starting to move this project again. It's in design, move it forward. Um, then we anticipate bidding the construction next year. RBO three I is the Tucker Hill Road Bridge. That's the same thing. Additional funding of one point one two five million. Again, we've been working with the, the New York Power Authority, because there is a high voltage power line on the bridge. We noticed that it did need, as we got into design, additional work, additional coordination to accomplish the construction. The next project, RBO three Z, Pump House Road over Peekskill Hollow Brook. That's three point one five million dollars for construction of that bridge. We are issuing RFPs. No, I take that back. That's in design now. So, we'll be asking for the construction. RBO four A, this is, we had done some rehabilitation work on this bridge. This is Broad Street Viaduct between Mount Vernon and Yonkers over the Bronx River Parkway. The five hundred thousand dollar request is to do a study, preliminary design, to determine the additional work that's required for this project, and then to fund that out in outer years. RBO four E is the Austin Avenue Bridge, also known as St. Leonard Drive, which is over the, uh, throughway in Yonkers. It's eight point five million for construction. We then move on to the roads. Now, this is, now that we do not have the ten million dollars.
Wait, can I just go back? Is that Austin Avenue Bridge? Is that design finished and out to bid?
Uh, no, no. The design, we have to put the RFP out for that project. So, design has not started yet. We anticipate starting design this year and then having the construction requested in twenty twenty-two. RB one eighty, as I was just about saying, we don't have the ten million dollar cap. So, before where we, you know, would look at and do segments of roads over several years, now we're starting to combine that. So, this request of one point nine two five million in twenty twenty-two is for the Central Park Avenue, all those different road numbers. That county road system is very interesting, the way it's divided up. And then a following request in twenty twenty-three of the construction and CM of seventeen million. So, the one point nine is for design, and then we do all of Central Park Avenue under one project in Yonkers. The, the four roads that we have before you, the twenty twenty-two request, this road has a payment condition index of sixty-seven. We usually like to address roads when they're under seventy. All the other three roads, the payment condition index is in the fifties. So, that's what we're looking at.
You're gonna have some, you're gonna have some traffic maintenance issues on Central Park Avenue when you do the construction.
Yeah, and again, the idea of combining all the projects, so we look at, you know, a lot of times when we do pave, you know, it's, you pave the lane, you know, it's, it's, maintenance protection, traffic, a single lane closures outside of commuting hours. But again, like putting the projects together, we're not disrupting a community this year, then next year, then two years later, you know, trying to, to pave that road that goes through the community in one shot. And that is something that we always have to look at, is the maintenance protection, traffic during construction, and how do we accomplish that? RB two seventeen is Central Park Avenue up in White Plains. That's four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for design and construction. The, the PCI on this road had dropped from our previous ratings. So, we do the ratings every three years. We should, we will be doing ratings again in twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty-two. These are all based on twenty nineteen ratings. So, this had dropped. We moved this program forward in the capital projects. Capital project RB two thirty-one, this has a PCI fifty-six. It's Pine Bridge Road up in North Castle, two point two three million for the entire project. And then RP, RB two thirty-two, East Main Street in Peekskill, PCI fifty-eight. That is a request of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand for the entire design, construction, construction management.
Before you go out of roads, can I ask, Manchester Avenue in Rochester has been on the last two capital budgets. Any idea when that's gonna happen?
Yes, we were, we will be going to issue an RFP for design. We originally had intended to try to get that done with staff at the end of last year, but given our workload, since we still are dealing with reduced staff that we used to have in prior years, we, it, to get it done, we're gonna go, assign that now to consultant. So, hopefully that will, you know, be into design and then construction next, construction funding next year. I will have to see if we can make the season for next year. But I believe road maintenance is, is monitoring the road. So, if there's issues, we can always try to address individual.
Another road was Willet, I think Willet Avenue to King Street.
I believe it's, I believe Willet, one second. I believe Willet Avenue is at ninety percent design. Hold on, I can just confirm that. Yeah, Willet Avenue is at ninety percent design, so it should be going out shortly with that construction.
Can you send the design to the planning board? I would like to see it, because that goes into the most complicated intersection in Porchester, a five-way intersection that is a mess. So, I'd like to see how that's being handled at the intersection.
I know we've been coordinating with the city, with, with Porchester, but I'll put the request in for you.
Yes, please.
So, Robert, one of my concerns about, about this is that, you know, in last year's capital plan, we put in some, you know, we, we talked a lot about including, you know, making these streets complete. So, thinking about, obviously pedestrians and, and people on bikes, and mentioning the fact that we really want to see things like recycled tracks and protected bike lanes. And the other question is, looking at sort of, you know, the bus navigation, like how these, these, these roads work for buses, and is there, are there opportunities for bus prioritization? I know we had this great report back in two thousand nine about Central, Central Park Avenue, and some of those recommendations were put in, in place, obviously not all of them, but things like, you know, sort of exclusive bus lanes during certain times, things like that, queue jumps. I, I don't see a lot of that. I mean, I guess my question is, is that happening in these designs? Some of them, like, you know, Ardsey Road, you know, like we've lost one side of the sidewalk network there. You know, the, the old staircase going down to the, the Bronx River Path is gone. You know, Takahoe, Takahoe Road Bridge, we really need some recycled tracks there. You know, the Broad Street Viaduct, that's a really important access point to the, the Fleetwood Train, you know, Train Metro North Train Station. And yes, there's a great sidewalk there, but there's nothing about bike facilities, integration with the bus network. And then, Austin Avenue Bridge over IAB seven, last year we were very specific, I believe, in like requesting, you know, protected bike lanes there. You know, were those included in the final design?
No, I mean, Austin, we didn't start design yet, so on that, you know. I do know, you know, I think a lot of the, if you look just like at the, the East Main Street there, there are constrictions to, you know, the, these existing roads. You know, we do try to look at those things. I believe right now, pending before the Board of Legislators, is legislation regarding complete streets. So, we'll, we'll see, you know, what that entails.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't mention East Main Street, because I understand, I'm only really talking about, about places where there's, there's sort of ample width. I mean, Central Park Avenue is an official bike route. Anybody's ever tried to ride a bike down Central Avenue kind of realizes that, you know, that's like a, sort of, yeah, a, a challenge.
Yeah, I mean, especially with the, the, the volume of traffic that you have and the, and the type of traffic, I can understand that.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess my question is, if I could ask Bill to forward my comments to you, have, and have those, those comments addressed, I would, I would appreciate that. One, one question I do have is Pump House Road.
Oh, wait, could I just add something to that? I just, I just want to say, this is, this is Naomi. We did a complete streets workshop up there in Peekskill in this area that's showing the slide, was, was covered, it was a number of years ago, but I can send that report to Bob, and there might be some elements that are relevant.
Thanks, Naomi.
Sure.
Um, thank you, Naomi. I mean, on, on Pump House Road, so this has sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred eighteen daily drivers, and we're spending, we were proposing to spend four million dollars. I guess my question is, there's a parallel route that's two tenths of a mile away, you know, off of Oregon Avenue, like Pump House on Gallows Hill Road. I guess my question is, like, should we be even rehabilitating this bridge? Or should we directing traffic to this alternative bridge? Because we're really not talking about that many cars.
Again, I guess it's an existing bridge. You'd have to have discussions with the, the people up there and, and, you know, how they feel about their traffic commute and, and, you know, it's an existing structure, and we have to, you know, are, we're maintaining it.
Yeah, I know, I hear what you're saying. I think, I think, I think that's something we need to start, start to think about a little more. I mean, four million dollars would give us four miles of sidewalk up there. Could sort of change the character of that place in a, in a better way. So, thank you very much for your time. And, and Bill, if you can, are you gonna be able to send those, my comments to him?
Yes, I could send them along. And again, it's, it's your call, it's the board's call on how much of these types of comments should be in the report. Again, I assume that we can draft it up and put the comments for, you know, say Pump House Road into the planning board report. I can also send it to Robert, or I could do one or the other. It's your call.
Well, Ri- Richard, I mean, I, I really, it's the, you know, the bigger picture for me is, is the sort of recycled tracks and the protected bike lanes on these, as these projects are being done, that they sort of get turned into state-of-the-art roads instead of sort of building what we had, you know, not building, we're not building back better. Okay. But that's, that's what I would ask.
And I, I can incorporate that type of, we can incorporate that type of comment and draft to get back to the board on, on the various roads and bridges. And you can take a look, see how it looks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bill, just one, yeah, I think though, the, if you could send me the, again, the prior comments, I think that was one of the.
We'll do. Right, that had, that had comments on things like Austin Avenue and also on the park, park facilities. And so, we'll, you could take a look at that, and we'll be incorporating some of these into the draft report for this year as well.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Robert. So, next up, Parks and Rec, we've got Representative Peter Tartaglia, First Deputy Commissioner of Parks is here, and he's gonna go through these slides. Thank you very much, Peter.
Sure, good morning. Just, Kathy O'Connor is here too. She's obviously a, you know, a board member. She's just with me right now, because we have some technical issues. Uh, thank you. Morning. This is our continuing capital projects for West, for Parks Recreation and Conservation. The first one is RGP thirteen. This is our general infrastructure. It's vehicle acquisition and replacement for our larger vehicle pieces, specialized equipment for parks and/or some vehicles that can be used in various parks. This is an annual program. Uh, RCL oh-two is Cranberry Lake Site Work. That's for three point three million. It's construction that will include improvements to the parking area, the driveways, pathways around the nature center, outdoor teaching pavilion seating areas and associated site work. This will follow the construction of the new nature center building. As you know, many of our parks have become more and more popular. The next project is RG one oh-four. This is Glen Island Bridge Rehabilitation. This is for forty-eight million dollars. This is for the construction funding for rebuilding the Bascal Bridge leading to Glen Island, and that includes a temporary bridge for continued access during the construction. That bridge is the only entrance and exit to the park, and it is, it is sorely needed to be totally replaced.
Okay, if I can add, there was almost ten million dollars appropriated for design in twenty seventeen. Has the design been completed?
The design was appropriated in twenty seventeen. The money was not bonded until, I forgot what year, but the design is taking place right now as we speak.
And does the design include a recycled track or protected bike lane or some kind of facility on it?
I don't know the answer to that. It is quite narrow there, but we will, we will get an answer for you.
Of all places, that would be the place you'd want it, I would think. You get, have safe bike access.
Okay, we will look into that. RG MO one, Mohansik Maintenance Facility. Uh, this is a cost escalation of two point eight five million. It is the construction of a new maintenance garage as well as renovation and preservation of historic storage forms.
Yeah, I discussed, I discussed this with you last year. Four million dollars, four point two million was appropriated last year. This two point eight million dollars is a sixty-seven percent site cost escalation. Somebody either misjudged the cost dramatically or new work was being added. I don't know which, but that's a tremendous, to have a site in one year to have a cost escalation of sixty-seven percent.
This particular project, if you look back, originated in twenty fourteen. There, this is, there are the historic buildings that are also added to this project. We do have the design. We do have the construction costs from the design that, that's currently underway.
The design is completed?
Not sure what, it's, it's close to complete. It's either at sixty or ninety.
So, this hasn't gone out, this has not gone out to bid at all?
No, it would not, because we're waiting for this cost escalation in twenty twenty-two to bid the whole project.
Yeah, I still don't understand why there should be a cost escalation of sixty-seven percent in one year, but I guess we shall see when the bids come in.
Okay, thank you. RPL oh-one, mechanical lakes, building renovation and site work, two point three million. This is for the construction funding for the demolition and stabilization of miscellaneous derelict and unsafe buildings and old waterwork structures that are on the property. We have just receiving now the design funding for this, so we will be, it's not much of a design, so we will be ready for construction.
Are any of those derelict buildings historic?
No, they are not.
Checked with the shipo?
We will check. Ken Yuli's on the phone. We will, we will check. We, if we haven't, we will. This came up with another property last year. Nothing on the property was historic, but we will check it out. Okay, we have a new project. This is RB R oh-seven, the Bronx River Pathway Reconstruction. This is designed for the areas that have not had any work done to them in many years. It's similar to what we're doing on the South and North County Trailway. It does not include the, the new section, Scarsdale to Hartsdale, that will be opening soon, or the South section, which is in Yonkers down the Oak Street. So, this will be approximately eight miles of pathway from Kensco Dan Plaza to Green Acres Avenue and Crane Road to Palmer Road. It includes crosswalks, pedestrian bridges, fencing, culverts, and associated site work and landscaping. This is for the design.
Okay, this is, the, the way this is scheduled, you have eight hundred thousand scheduled for design next year, and then seven point two million for construction in twenty twenty-four.
Correct.
And that gap between design and construction seems a little bit more logical than some of the others, which have construction the next year, which there's no way construction is really gonna be able to start if design hasn't even started yet. So, I mean, I think maybe this, I don't know what made you think in this particular case, we should have a year gap between design and construction, and some of the others not, not. Hello? You're on mute.
Sorry, apologize. Uh, most of what we've presented already had, are in design. They're not, this is brand new. Bronx River will take two years. All these other projects that we have presented today are in design already. All these other projects that we have presented today are in design already. These are mo- these are mostly for construction work, except for the one that we just spoke about for the Bronx River.
Okay.
Okay, and then Playland, we have two projects, RPO two A Ice Casino Improvements. This is for fifteen point six five million. This is design and construction funding for the Studio Rink Project and the design of the general building improvements throughout the pro- the project. This is mostly on the right wing of the Ice Casino and some other improvements within the building. And then finally, RPO two A Playland Structural Restoration, twenty nine million. This is our continuing rebuilding and reconstructing Playland projects. This construction funding is for the rehabilitation of the game rooms, arcade buildings, and the remaining food shops in the park. There are many small, we call small buildings within the park. This will complete that project.
Obviously, both of these projects involve historic buildings.
Yes.
Please make sure you get a shipo comments and sign off on any post-construction.
Yes, we we all, we have consistently done that everywhere. Obviously, at Playland, it's a more facility, and we continue to do that. We have our designer on board for all these projects, and we have gotten approval for everything we've done through shipo, and we will continue to do that with these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're on mute, Bill.
I apologize again, juggling the mute. So this is a DPWT again, but this is the transport, these are the transportation projects, page seventy nine and bus and bus facility projects. If you want to go to the next slide, Michael. And I believe we have Michael Sui on the call from DPWT. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, good morning, everybody. It's Michael Sui. Then, as as Bill mentioned, the next three slides have to do with the Beeline buses and bus facility projects. The first three projects, T zero zero one U, one Y, and one Z, are replacement of buses. T zero zero one U is replacement of our thirty foot bus fleet. And you see, we have eleven point two million to replace buses in next year's budget. T zero zero one Y is replacement of our coach style buses. There are currently twenty seven coach style buses, and the funding requested next year will be to replace those buses. T zero zero one Z is for replacement of our ninety five forty foot hybrid buses. Those are our current hybrid buses. And the reason the the amount requested next year is so low that that funding is for the preparation of specifications for the buses. The big, the big dollar figure will come in twenty twenty three when we actually purchase the replacement buses.
Are any of the forty foot buses hybrid or electric?
Currently, we have a pending order, capital project T zero zero one X for a hundred and six new hybrid buses, which are replacing diesel buses. And we currently have T zero zero one Z. Those are ninety five current hybrid buses.
But it says in one U, it says there'll be seventeen electric and or hybrid buses to replace seventeen.
Correct, yes, yes.
Why it doesn't mention that the twenty seven forty foot buses will be hybrid or electric?
At at this time, yeah, a portion of the T zero zero one U thirty foot buses, a portion of those buses that we are replacing will be electric and a portion will be hybrid. We're currently working on electric infrastructure at the Valhalla Garage to add six all-electric buses as an earlier phase of this of T zero zero one U. The T zero zero one Y, the forty foot coach buses, those at this point in time will be replaced with hybrid buses for a couple of different reasons. The coach buses have much longer routes that they have to run. And also, the big, big hurdle, which we'll get into in the in the last slide, is getting the infrastructure in place in the garages before we purchase electric buses. That is the big part of getting electric buses is to make sure that we have some place to charge them before we order them. And the, you know, the replacement schedule of these current buses is what it is. We really can't delay them for several years until we get all the infrastructure in place. So what we will be doing over the next few years is buying some electric and some hybrids, depending on the capacity of the charging infrastructure at the two garages.
Is a hybrid bus similar to a hybrid car where it itself generates?
Yes, correct. It has it has a diesel engine and then, you know, a battery, which basically they they alternate between the two, depending on how the bus is operating.
Okay, thank you.
So, Michael, what you're saying is, I'm sorry, this is Rob there, and what you're saying is that that we can't based upon the life of the existing buses, we can't wait a couple, like, two or three years to delay these orders to wait to see if the electric charging infrastructure works out or, you know, design a a new infrastructure system whereby we have sort of satellite, you know, placed along the route for the buses to recharge.
That, yes, that is correct, but we are currently in the early stages of doing an analysis through the through NIPA, New York Power Authority, of what it will take to get to replace more buses with all-electric buses. As I mentioned earlier, we're currently adding six all-electric buses. You know, these, these will be the first all-electric buses in the fleet. We are well underway with that project. We're actually expecting the first electric bus next month, sometime in July. And the way we we approach that project was we assessed how much, how many buses we could get in there at this point. Because of the, the, basically, the infrastructure can only accommodate so many buses under the current conditions. So what, we're going to be adding six electric buses up there, and that will essentially max out the electrical infrastructure at the at the Valhalla Garage. So any additional buses that we put in there will require what we anticipate to be relatively significant amount of of improvements, not only within the garage, but also the electrical infrastructure leading to the garage.
Have we, have we already funded a, like, a sort of a, a study for this?
Yes, that's, 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 I had mentioned earlier, we, there is a study that NIPA, New York Power Authority, is also working with us, and I know Naomi Klein, who I believe is still on the phone, is working hand in hand with them on that study. Basically, what it will do is analyze, you know, the capacity of the existing garages. A lot of the route profiles of the buses, because there are certain routes which would be more akin to having electric buses, because, you know, an electric bus only has a certain number of miles that it can go before it can be recharged. They'll be looking at, you know, satellite recharging facilities. So yes, that's all being looked at. But again, you know, it will take some time.
Wish we still had those wires, those trolley wires.
Yes.
Yeah, I can, I can just add, we were, Westchester was one of the five transit systems designated by the governor to be all-electric by twenty thirty five. So so the the New York State is paying for the study that that Michael mentioned, but it's being managed through the Power Authority. And we're, we're included in this preparation of a whole electric vehicle master plan to really make sure that we have the charging infrastructure available and to lay out a plan for us to to have that. And it's just really critical that the garages are made ready, but also looking at the whole issue of en route charging infrastructure.
Hey, let's, let's move along.
Okay, the last project on the first slide is T zero zero four six. That's fare box equipment. Many of you may know that the MTA is moving to the Omni System, which is a contactless fare collection system. We are part of the MetroCard system along with the MTA, so we will eventually be replacing all the fare boxes on all of our buses. At this point, it's technically scheduled for twenty twenty three, but we will need, we're asking for the funds next year because we have to obviously buy the equipment well before the system goes into play.
What do people do who don't have smartphones?
They'll be, you still, we'll be able to buy a card, you know, like, almost like a credit card that you can carry with you. So there, there's many, many options that will be available through the Omni System to to make it as readily accessible to to as many people as possible.
Okay, go on.
Okay, the next slide, T zero zero forty four seven, that's replacement of the HVA system at the Serrato Maintenance Facility. The money funding requested next year is for design, the two hundred and fifty thousand. The next two projects are general capital projects, one, T zero zero six eight for the Yonkers facility, and the second one, T zero zero six nine for the Valhalla facility. And T zero zero six eight, we are scheduled to replace several different subprojects for for three million dollars. Excuse me. That includes a replacement of a smaller HVA system in the garage, replacement of a backflow prevention for the main water pipe that enters the building, and also replacing the fuel dispensing equipment. That is the three million that's requested in twenty twenty two. T zero zero six nine, Serrato Infrastructure, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is for a new fuel dispensing system. T zero zero nine G Power Transit Vehicles, one point seven five million dollars. We have approximately a hundred power transit vehicles, which have about a four or five year life. So essentially, we'll be replacing fifteen to twenty vehicles per year, and the one point seven fifty is for those vehicles. Next slide, T zero zero, T zero zero seventy, Serrato Bus Garage Site Improvements. The funding requested is for cost escalation. The the project itself is for new pavement and drainage for the entire facility, as well as upgrade of the detention ponds that are located in front of the, in front of the garage. T zero zero seven three Electric Bus Charging Infrastructure. As I had mentioned before, this will fund whatever comes of those studies that we are currently doing. So as as Naomi mentioned, you know, once that study is is finished, hopefully, you know, by the end of this year, early next year, we will then have the funding in place to carry out the findings of that study. And that concludes transportation.
Great. Thank you very much, Michael. Next up is one project for the airport, and I believe Jim Antonacci is on the call. And so, great, thank you very much, Jim.
Morning, everyone. The twenty twenty two capital request for Project A oh ninety seven of twenty eight million dollars is requested to fund construction and construction of administration of upgrades to the airport's fire line services. Fire line services provide water to fire sprinkler systems throughout the entire airport. The requested upgrades will meet all current codes and standards. The requested project is an important life safety project for the airport. The debt service for this project will be paid from the Airport Special Revenue Fund and will not impact the county tax levy. And this project is currently in design. Thank you.
This says the county share is is twenty eight million.
Yeah, the, it'll be bonds issued with the debt service paid from the Airport Special Revenue Fund.
Is this a project that we saw as a capital project amendment in twenty twenty one?
Yes, that was for the design piece, and you're absolutely correct. That's why we're currently in design.
And 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 also, I'm sorry, Richard, there was a CBA associated with this project, A oh ninety seven, I believe this past year. And Jim, if you want to kind of give a summary, it was, it was actually to fund separate from this, the fire system, it was extending a line up King Street to address.
Yeah, there's two components to what we call the domestic water system improvements, the water system improvements, which includes the the consent order to put the public water main on New King Street and this associated follow up project next year to provide adequate water service for for fire sprinklers.
So again, the CBA this past year was for bringing water up to New King Street for to regard, related to the consent order on contamination.
Next time, so you don't confuse me, put north towards the top of the map.
Right. Or put a big fat north arrow, so we don't have to.
Well, I see the north arrow.
There's a, there's a north arrow, right.
I I I knew that the lake was not to the right, so.
Yeah, yeah, and it's tough to fit on these horizontal slides, so.
Yeah, I understand.
It just makes smaller sometimes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay, next slide, Michael. We're going to the Department of Environmental Facilities. And I'm hoping that.
Yeah, I'm here.
CJ is here. Thank you very much, CJ. I didn't see your name. I have to look around for it, but so we've got CJ Gelardo from the Department of Environmental Facilities is going to talk, walk you through the variety of projects with DEF.
Hi, good morning. So we have one refuse project, which comes up every year. We replace the oldest trailers and tractors that haul the the garbage to to the Peak Scale Burn Plant. So that's typical. We we replace the oldest and most worn. We can move to the next slide. Now we're moving on to the sewer work. Primarily, what you're going to see here is roofs and pumping stations. But there's a few others sprinkled in. So the first one is the Asset Management Plan. So we're going from plant to plant to evaluate all the equipment and help us figure out how much useful life it has left and and a a plan, organized plan to replace everything, so that way we could be efficient in our in our capital plans and in our, how we use our equipment. So this is help us save money in the long run. The next project is roofs at Linebrook. Our roofs are getting old. These plants are old. They need to be replaced, so we don't have issues with leaking, which has happened a couple of times. So we're trying to be more proactive now, make sure we don't have any leaks into the into the buildings. The next project is sewer reconstruction and maintenance. This is required by federal laws and mandates and make sure that our our collection system is is in a state of good repair so that we don't have any discharges into the environment. We don't cause pollution. So we're going to replace this section of piping in in Rye. The next project is the BNR media and aeration equipment replacement at Mamaroneck. That media is little little discs that help soak up the nitrogen that we, that the keeps the 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 sounds from receiving that additional nitrogen that would, that would cause pollution and fish kills and all sorts of things. And the aeration equipment, it, those, that media floats around in the aeration equipment, so we have to upgrade the the mixers, and this helps us, this is a consent order, so we have to make sure that equipment is working properly. We can move on to the next slide. More roofs, this is Mamaroneck. We're doing some roof replacements at Mamaroneck. The next two projects are pumping stations, where we replace all the equipment in there, pumps and any, and HVAC, electrical, sometimes there's screens, there's usually backup generators, all that needs to be replaced, because these are, these, these pumping stations are in operation twenty four seven, three sixty five, so they get worn out. And about once every twenty years, we try to, we we just rotate, get to all of them and and try to replace them. The the next project shows we're going to replace some roofs at, at the North Yonkers Pumping Station. Again, the roofs are are getting towards the end of their useful life, and we want to make sure that we don't have any leaks. Moving on to the next slide, more pumping stations. This is in the North Yonkers Sewer District. And also, the next project shows in Austin, the same thing. We have forty two of these pumping stations spread throughout the county. And so we we bounce around and do the ones that are in the the most need. The the next project for Peak Scale is to replace some sludge pumps that have had some issues in the past with leaking, a piece cracked and and water didn't get out to the environment, but it did flood and and it caused some issues for us in the plant. So we want to replace those pumps, raise them up, raise the controls up. So if anything did flood, then it wouldn't be, it wouldn't affect the operation. It wouldn't short out all the controls. The next project, again, is another pumping station project in Peak Scale. And this one, we're actually going to also replace some force main along with it. That needs to be replaced again to make sure we don't discharge any sewage into the environment. The next project on the next slide, there you go, Port Chester, we're replacing roofs there as well. And the project after that is, we're you you saw this actually last year, we're extending a trunk line in the town of Newcastle to be able to get more people off of off of the septic systems and into the sewer, that's into the sewer system. So that's like a countywide mandate. It's better for the environment. So we're trying to increase access to people that so they can connect to the to the sewer system.
Okay, I have a, I have a question on that one. The the report, planning report says it'll provide up to eight hundred parcels who now pay county sewer taxes and do not receive public sewer. That makes sense. Of the eight hundred parcels, how That makes sense. Of the eight hundred parcels, how many of them are occupied and how many of them are vacant, which would allow for new construction?
I, I have to get back to you on that. It's pretty developed area. I don't believe there's a lot of empty vacant lots, but I, I, I have to, I'll talk to.
Okay, we need this information before we make our recommendation to the, uh.
Sure. Well, I, I can tell you it's, it's pretty developed. It's, there's, there's not going to be many, very many, but I'll certainly find out. So you want to know how many vacant property and.
This is Vinnie. I'm not sure if his planning have any information on that, because they wouldn't have that information.
Well, it's, I'm sure you have it in, in some computers in the county as to which properties in this, uh, area are vacant and which are occupied.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can give a rough estimate on, on the number of parcels vacant and the acreage of those parcels. Um, you know, I, I, we can try to do a rough count of, you know, with.
You really should also look at the zoning of the parcel.
Per zoning, right.
You know, this, this came up previously when, um. There were some parcels at, that were going to use the, uh, the Bedford Jail Facility. Plant to, uh, to deal with some local residents who had failing septics. And that caused the big political uproar. And, uh, we felt that, you know, when you're doing a Trump sewer, there's, you know, they should allow for. For development of those parcels that are vacant, as well as upgrading the problems with those parcels that are already.
Well, yeah, so we're, we're, we put the trunk line in. We don't, we're not connecting all of those lots, to be honest. That's, that's, that's the responsibility of the homeowner of the town. If they need, if they need, uh, sewer lines that connect to our trunk, the county does the trunk, that's the big ones. And then people connect to us, so we're actually. Not one lot's going to actually be connected through this. Okay.
Yeah, and I, I just want to mention that there are some. Lots that you pay water and sewer on that have things like garages and other non-water and sewer connections.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I think this is important. It should, I understand the county just puts in the trunk, but if a trunk goes by a piece of vacant property. And let's say someone wants to build affordable housing on that property, that, that developer now has access to sewer line. Whereas previously did not have access to sewer line, and the only way they could build the affordable housing or market rate housing or commercial or whatever the zoning happens to be. They couldn't do it unless they had put a package plant up there, which is then very difficult. Okay, are these parcels?
Yeah, so we're putting.
Parcels, are these parcels in the watershed?
It is close to, I'd have to look at that too. It is close to the, to the reservoir.
Again.
I don't know if it's in the watershed or not.
Well, again, before we make our recommendation, I think this is an important issue, and I think we need to have all that data.
Gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen, it's Mike Kaplowitz. I can add a little bit of detail and color to this discussion. Um, since was involved as a legislator and now in DEF. The, the big impetus for this is the Riverwoods Yeshiva. Um, the plants, uh, up on the, uh, the Croton Creek, it goes right into the reservoir. Uh, since, uh, a number of years ago, we, we put them into the sewer district. Um, there's no incentive for any new development. Riverwoods is built out, Yeshiva is built out. Um, this is to take a plant that is, uh, our, I would use the word polluting, not, not the fair word. But really not doing a good job of treating their existing sewage from existing development. Uh, and in fact, now with this, um, trunk spur extension, allowing for the Riverwoods Yeshiva. Um, wastewater to hook into, um, you know, into the system that they, they belong in, because they, they've been included in the district. Uh, to the, the development issue, it'll be interesting to see what comes up. My understanding is, is, is very little additional parcels that can be developed. This is, um, not only a developed community, but a community that doesn't want any more development. And so in cases, you're looking at de minimis, um, additional, um, potential vol- volume. The one area that, that there might be some discussion in the future from a strategic standpoint is the Millwood Business District area and those surrounding communities. But this trunk spur, sewer trunk sewer spur, uh, geographically is nowhere near the Millwood section. So it's, it's a great question and, and detail will follow. But it, it, it is for the purpose of primarily the Riverwoods Yeshiva. And if you go up and see that pocket plant, you'll see that it is desperately in need of turning that into a, um, not a treatment plant. But instead a, basically a pumping facility, uh, and, and the opportunity to send it down to appropriate treatment.
Again, I am not opposed. It's an important project, but in the past municipalities, as you said. We don't want development and we can't have development because we don't have any sewer service. Well, now this area is going to have sewer service. And so I think we need to see, you know, what any potential, the other development beside the Yeshiva might be involved on this. Okay, go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. That was good, uh, official info. Um, the next project is additional construction to, uh, replace, uh, the two remaining, uh, engines at, uh, engine generators at the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant. The new ones will have much less air pollution and also be able to generate their own electricity. You've been using the digester gas that's created on, on the site. Uh, the idea being this will be very environmental friendly, you know, will help really reduce our, our reliance on, on, uh, fossil fuels and be more self-reliant. So it's, it's a great project, um, and that's just start construction.
Okay, there recently, there, let's go back to that one. There, there recently was a press conference down there saying that. I don't know how many tens of millions of dollars trying to get from the federal government for this particular plant regarding the odor issues. What is the status now of the money that the county has allocated from its capital project? Towards odor treatment in this particular plant?
I think, uh, I think CJ, I think you're going to address that later on, but we have a, I think it's, uh, I, I forget the, the dollar value. I think it's a fifteen million dollar job, uh, I forget exactly.
Roughly about fifteen. It's actually not in here because that money was already approved. So it wouldn't come up, but, um, we, uh, basically we were, we were very close to finishing the design. And then, uh, we received some more input from the community. And, you know, honestly, we were hoping to just get this, get the work started and we would address those later, but the community was insistent. But they, they wanted us to, to wait, do it all now. They, they were willing to wait, you know, the extra six months or so to finish the design, add these additional elements. And then we can go out to construction. So, um, I was, you know, I would have been able to tell you that we were already started construction if that didn't happen, but that's okay. That's great. We added, we added more elements that the, that the community wanted. So the design, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the design, well, yeah, the design should be done by the end of, by the end of the year, hopefully before, and then construction will start. Um, either by, towards the end of the year, maybe early next year, by the time we get all the, the bids back and, you know, the, there's a lot of stuff the county has to go through, but it's, uh, it's close. It's very close.
I think the design, I think the design should be done in, um, late second quarter, uh, third quarter of this year. And then we'll put that out to design. And just to go back, just to clarify something you had said earlier.
Wait, wait, what's the mitigate, what's the mitigation?
You had said, uh, something about less pollution, about the, the engine generators. We're just so for the record, we're not putting out any kind of pollution at, at, at the Yonkers plant, uh, due to the existing engines right now. This is just going to use more of the digester gas and burn off the digester gas that they, be useful to turn into electricity. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What is the mitigation from the fifteen million dollar project that's designed, going to be finished in the second or third quarter, construction to start? Will that solve the problem?
Uh, it should solve most of the issues. Um, there are always, uh, you know, the. The, the more healthy, the more up to date, the more, uh, advanced the plant is, the, you know, the, the less odors you get from the plant. So, you know, not just doing odor control work, but also refurbishing the plant and, and putting money to the plant and, and renovating it. Bring it up to, um, you know, latest technology definitely makes it a healthier plant and a more efficient plant. So that's, that's part of the money that would, would help, and eventually that would, that does help, uh, the plant to generate less odors also.
What is the local group that you're, that you're working with that you said preferred that it be, uh, delayed to include other items?
Uh, it's Ludlow Park Residents Association.
Okay, this just keeps coming up and coming up and coming up. It'd be nice if. I'm sure you'd like to get it out of your hair also.
Yeah, like I said, and again, uh, again, but this is, this is actually the fourth phase of odor control work out of that project. We've done, we've done work. We've been doing work. This, this is what we thought would be the last phase. Obviously, this federal money would change that, but we were trying to get, um, this last bit of the work done. But it's not like we haven't been doing anything. This is the fourth phase of odor control work we've been doing out of this project.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so the next project, um, is, uh, for repair of the, of the bulkhead at the Yonkers Joint Treatment Plant. Steel sheeting, um, that was, uh, has been damaged and that we need to, to, to repair. So, uh, right at the river, the bulkhead is, now separates the plant from, from the Hudson River. Uh, the next project.
Wait, I'm sorry, on that one?
Yeah, go on, Rob.
Yeah, I mean, we, for, last year in the capital plan, we provided some very detailed, um, comments, talking about the, our desire to, to put a path along. The river's edge around that plant. Um, can you tell us what happened to that?
So that's still, that's, nothing happened to it. It's still there. We have your comments. So thi- this project is to repair damage that happened. It actually happened around two thousand. It was repaired. And it's starting to damage, it's, it's starting to wear out again. Uh, it was actually hit by a barge. So we have to repair this wall. That's a priority. That's a safety issue. That's a, the plant's going to fall in the river type of an issue. We have a separate project where we're going to do, uh, flood mitigation. And one of the, one of the leading, we haven't, you know, we're still evaluating options, but one of the leading options could potentially be to put a wall, increase the size of that wall. Maybe put the wall around the entire plant. Um, at that point, we can look into how feasible that would be. We can't really guarantee that we wouldn't be able to do that. Or it would go on the riverside or it could have to go around the plant, but it's something we could look at at the time we do the flood mitigation. This, that's a separate project. That's not in this plan right now because that money, we have the, the design money already approved. The construction money is out a few years as we work on the design. So you will have another chance to look at that, but that really, um, doesn't impact this. This is strictly damage repair. To make sure that we don't make any, anything, nothing gets worse.
So you're saying, uh, in the existing site, there is no room for a path along the perimeter?
Well, we said we could, we could certainly try to look into it and see what's feasible. Uh, putting it on the riverside is, that's definitely a little tricky because of security reasons and, right, there's no, there isn't really space. That plant, the plant was actually built on the river. They, they expanded out on the river. So that walkway would be floating on the river, hanging above the river as well if it went on that side. And I'm not sure how feasible that would be.
They just did that in New York City. They put a floating park in the river.
Uh, I guess if we're, if the state or whoever else would let us extend further into the river and take up more of the river. I guess that, that could potentially be a possibility. That would probably be more than just the scope of the, of the, of DEF. That would be a bigger countywide kind of, I'm sure parks would have to be involved or somebody that's, uh, planning, of course. That's, that's a much bigger undertaking. Um, but it certainly can, could be, could be looked at.
Please, look at it.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The next project is, um, uh, pumping station repairs, more rehabilitation, uh, in the South Yonkers Sewer District. And that, uh, that leads us into the water, sewer and water kind of combined in, in a lot of those stuff. But it's now into the water project, so the first water project they show there, the last one on your screen is, uh. Uh, this is for, uh, a southern connection of the Kentsico Bronx, Bronx Pipeline. So that way we can extend it down to actually, it would actually intercor- interconnect with New York City and provide, uh, mutual redundant water supply. They could, they could take from us, and in case of emergency, we could, we could take their supply. Every water supply has to have backup, uh, a backup supply in case, you know, for a case of emergencies. And, uh, so we need to do this here to, to, to get the southern portion of that water dish. So that would be people in Yonkers and Mount Vernon. They, uh, they need, they need a, 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 a better, more reliable, uh, backup water supply. Um, the next project, um, Shaft Twenty-Two and Kentsico Dam. Um, it's kind of similar to the pumping stations. This, this, these, this facility, these two facilities are in operation all day, every day, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. Treating the drinking water and they've worn out. It's, it's, it's time for them to be rehabbed. The equipment is getting old, so we want to make sure that it's. It's all up to date. Everything's up to code, chemical, there's chemicals that we use to treat the water. They need to be stored properly. There needs to be a proper way to, uh, contamina- containment while you're, while you're, uh, getting deliveries of the, of the, of the, of the chemicals. All that will be, uh, taken care of in this project. And, uh, the next project.
I, I, I keep getting letters from Suez saying that the portion of my drinking water that comes from the, from the Westchester System does not meet standards.
That, that could be something else. We, we used to have to send letters out. I'm surprised, we, we don't, we don't have to do anymore. We, we did work on the northern end, um, it is what we call the Central Avenue Pumping Station. And also, um, the Gate of Heaven Pumping Station, those use, those use now use UV disinfectant.
Right.
We like to disinfect. So during part of that portion, there was, there was a time when we had to send these letters out. It was mostly because our health department had, uh, was keeping, holding us to a higher standard than the state, to be honest, in terms of, of what they call spec water. But that's all been, that's all been resolved. We do not, we now do meet the long, that was the, the long-term surface water treatment rule. Um, so we, the state, the state requires less than five, five percent or less, or less than five percent of untreated spec water. That, you know, when you're turning on and off a system, uh, you know, a few gallons are going to get through that don't actually get the lights shined on them. But when it's dispersed throughout the whole system, it's, it's not a, a threat at all to the, to, to the public safety. And we were at the point, we were having point zero one percent go through. And the health department wanted us to have zero, literally zero point zero zero percent water that didn't get full treatment from the, from the lights. And that's virtually impossible. So that's, that, we had to work that issue out internally, and that's why those letters stopped. I'm not sure why Suez keeps sending you letters, to be honest with you. But yeah, everything is, the water is safe. The water meets all requirements and regulations. I could say that with, with full confidence. The next project, uh, is the Eastview Pumping Station. Um, so this is, we're creating a new pumping station that is going to, uh, tie into the water that, uh, is received by New York City DE, that their UV-treated facility. To treat, um, to treat the, uh, for the water that's, that serves the Grasslands Campus. And it's, it's the same thing. This, this will work in, in conjunction with our existing facilities to provide redundant backup, uh, water supply. Now that that, now that the water needs to be UV-treated, we had to upgrade our backups. So we first had to upgrade our systems and then upgrade our backup systems to make sure they met, they met the, the requirement. Um, the next slide, the next project is, again, pumping stations. Uh, this, this one is specifically for Playland. We're going to, we're going to do this project. We just did a lot of work at Playlands. We want to make sure that the sewer system and the pumping syst- the sewer pumping system is, is also new to serve the Playland Park. Important. The next project, um, is odor control and HVAC, uh, rehabilitation at the Mamaroneck Plant. Um, want to make sure that we don't, you know, there's a park nearby, there's neighbors nearby, but want to make sure that no odors are, are, are getting out from there. Uh, another, another Mamaroneck project is the next one where we're doing emergency power upgrades. We're going to replace the, uh, the old, uh, the aging, uh, generator and replace it with X. We're going to use two new generators to replace that one. It would be more efficient, actually, that they do, they only do certain parts of the plant. Um, and then the next project is. Uh, again, at Mamaroneck, this is replacing the blowers. This kind of ties in with the, the, uh, media work we're doing before in the aeration. It's part of nitrogen removal, which is a consent order, which is very important to Long Island Sound. Uh, and so, uh, these blowers literally blow air into the tanks to, to, to. Supply air for the, uh, the microbiology to, to, to lit, breathe and live and eat, you know, eat all the, uh, the waste and, and eat all the nitrogen. So, uh, we need, we want to, uh, replace the, the aging blowers with new, more efficient blowers. They're going to be, uh, turbo, so they, they won't use as much electricity and they'll be able to provide enough airflow to the, to the process, to the microbiology. The next, uh, project, uh, fire and gas detection system. We're also going to include a little bit of security upgrades in terms of cameras. So we're going to replace, uh, the fire and gas detection, uh, equipment. Uh, it's a life safety requirement, uh, to make sure that, you know, if any, any, there's any hazardous gases that could, you know, hurt the staff, that, that, uh, they're detected early. The next project, uh, we're going to replace some, uh, HVAC equipment at Peak Skill that is, um. Failing, um, and needs to be, needs to be upgraded. Um, and the next project is at Yonkers. Primary sleds, gravity thickening, pipement replacement improvements. Uh, the, the piping and valves is very old. It's hard to operate. They, they, they can't, they can't operate the valves. They're stuck. The piping itself is old and corroded. We want to make sure we replace all this equipment so that it's operating properly and, and well. And we don't have any leaks or any issues, uh, spills. And the next project is solids handling upgrades. So that's once the solids gets to, gets processed. So the first project is the pumping, is the collection and pump piping that gets it to where we actually process the solids. And then now all that equipment needs to be evaluated and replaced. It's also reaching the end of its useful life. And we're going to also look at the digester tanks on that project, you know, clean those out, inspect them and see what, what work, if any work needs to be done in them. And, uh, believe that's, uh, what's, what's the next one here?
Hey, Chris. Um, can you, on RDO 21, the vehicle haulage, the haulage vehicles?
Right.
We had provided in last year's capital plan, um, report, the, some, on page nine, vehicle per good purchase recommendations. We provided some specific links to resources. Um, were those looked at and used to assess which vehicles to, to buy?
Those were passed along. I can certainly check with, uh, the people in our department who, who do purchase those, that equipment in the refuse dist- district, the refuse group. I'll, I'll, I'll confirm with them if they, uh, if they were able to buy anything. And I believe at one point they said they looked and they didn't see a lot of that stuff was available, but, um, the flaps and stuff, I think we can do that. So I will, uh, I'll follow up.
Okay. Let, let me just read you a, a section from Suez. About 33% of your water supply is unfiltered water purchased from the Westchester Joint Water Works. This water is compliant with most requirements. However, it is in violation of the filtration treatment technique requirement that has been in effect since 1993. Uh, Westchester Joint Water Works has made non-filtration improvements to strengthen the disinfection process. And they are working to meet the filtration regulation. It's important to note that there have been no disease outbreaks in your drinking water.
I know, I know government is very confusing, but the, the Westchester Joint Water Works is a separate entity that is not part of Westchester County or the DEF.
Yeah, but they're getting the water from.
The Westchester, they're getting water from the Westchester Joint Water Works. I know it's confusing, but that's a.
Where, where are they getting the water from? From the Kentsico Dam, right?
Yeah, but everyone's, everyone's responsible for treating it themselves. Raw water is, is not the same thing as drinking water. You have a raw water source, you treat it, you give it to your, 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 your res- your residents, your, your customers. But again, I'm, I, I know it is. It is confusing. The Westchester Joint Water Works is a separate, separate entity.
My next question is, you have like dozens of projects here. Are you going to be able to do them all next year?
That's the plan. You know, I, we had the same conversation last year.
We did.
Our big, that was supposed to be our big, uh, catch-up year, but you know, you all, you know what happened there. We didn't, we weren't able to get a lot done as much as we wanted. Um, so now we're hoping, you know, next year. Cause you, 2020, 2021, we were supposed to be playing catch-up. And now we're really hopefully getting out of this. We're really hopefully on the back end of this, this whole, this whole mess. So we're really hoping to be able to push. And we hear, we hear contractors are hungry, right? Things slow down. So people, people want to work. So we're hoping, yeah, the answer is yes. We're hoping to be able to push this stuff through.
Okay, I want to thank all of the department representatives who have, uh, given us information at this meeting. Um, I'm planning staff. You've heard the questions from the members in terms of the information that we would like before we send our recommendation on. Uh, if any member of the board here has, uh, anything, they can send it in writing to the planning staff, uh, by June 15th is when they'd like to cut it off. I know July 6th is the date that they would like to adopt it, but, uh, in the past, we have been able to go to August and still stay within the timeframes that are required, but it would be nice to get it done. I know this one went over the two-hour timeframe we had set, but, um, I think there were some good questions that came up. Uh, Bill, if you could send the, those comments, uh, that you, your responses to me, if you could send those out to the planning board members in writing. And I would send it on to the, you know, the budget department at least, and any other departments that you think, uh, that are involved in the process, that, uh, it would be useful. I think that was very important information.
Will do.
Does anyone else on the board who is still awake have any comments or questions or suggestions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Thank you. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
I heard everyone voted in favor. Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks all.
Thanks.